Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six oh one P. M. And I'll call to order the Freetown Board Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. Just as a heads up, tonight, we do have three different public hearings around seven P. M. and then seven fifteen P. M. So just a note on that. So we'll jump right into Agenda Item One. Discussion vote whether to approve but not release the executive session minutes from November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
All right, so thou entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from eleven four, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have open session minutes from the same night. So any question or concerns with that?
No.
No.
All right, so thou entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from eleven four, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Agenda Item Three. This is whether or not to declare nineteen seventy-eight Ford Fire Truck as surplus and donate to the town of Berkeley. We have a fire chief here. We received letters indicating from fire chief indicating that we actually receive this for free, right? In the past, we have now a replacement, and we do a lot of mutual aid with Berkeley. So I think that's in our benefit.
She'd like the best fit, still available to us that way.
Yeah, give it a new home.
Yep, we do a lot, a lot of work with Berkeley, so.
Is it still operational?
It is, it is.
That's impressive, too, seventy-eight.
It's, it's, well, it started its life, and it was bought brand-new for Wareham. And then it went to Marion for a short time. And Marion was, needed garage space and didn't want to park it outside and have it go meet its demise. So I was fortunate enough to hear about it and when looked at it, and yeah, it's, it can go fight a fire right now if it needs to, so.
Fine, I'm sure that seventy-eight has probably outlived a lot of stuff built in the nineties.
The issue with it for us is, well, we already had this other truck project underway, but it's a standard transmission, so, you know, there are fewer and fewer of us.
It's a dying breed, it is.
Can drive that, never mind drive it through the woods, so.
Yeah.
That sounds like fun, actually.
Yeah.
It's standard.
Yeah. All right, so.
I mean, it's only fitting that it goes somewhere else, and that we continue it on like that.
Yeah, exactly.
If obvious reasons, we don't keep the second one, just because for upkeep and the storage for it, just in case anybody's interested why.
We still have two.
All right.
We have the deuce and a half that was finished back in the nineties that we built in-house, and now the new one that we just wrapped up. So we're going to try to do our best, as long as we got pots, and I have pots for the deuce and a half at the highway bond, so. Part of the problem with that is that keeping it going with pots, because they're hotter and hotter to get, but the LMTV chassis still, those pots are readily available, and we haven't, haven't broken anything yet, so. Excellent, thank you, Chief.
Sounds good, so without, I'll entertain a motion to declare nineteen eighty-seven Ford Fire Truck as, sorry, I say eighty-seven, nineteen seventy-eight Ford Fire Truck as surplus and donate to the town of Berkeley.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks, Chief.
Thanks, folks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
You as well.
Okay. Agenda Item Four, discussion of vote whether to declare the two thousand and ten John Deere Loader as surplus and use a trade for the new loader for the Highway Department?
Yes. However, Vicky King called from the transfer station and has requested this loader. Trying to get, she currently has, I think their loader is a,
I know, I know.
It's maybe a seventy-six.
Yeah.
It's not used that much.
It has no heat.
It has no heat, but, I mean, I've been told that they can put accessory, like accessory heat in there. I am currently working on, so this is being paid for with Opera money, and we're really down to the wire with our Opera money. So I did go over the schedule with Matt today to see how much money we have for Opera. We have about two hundred, and I think I still have two hundred and forty thousand dollars of Opera. So Chuck is trying to get a quote for trading in Vicky's machine, but I wish they were here tonight, because there's a lot of problems with that, the loader, which is why I decided to pull the trigger on trading it in, like it needs tires, which are ten thousand dollars. There was other things.
Some stuff on the bucket work. I remember he listed off a bunch of stuff to us, because I was actually asked about this, why we're not trading in the older one, for, you know, for some of these reasons, and I thought it was two things. It was to do with the amount of money we'd get on a trade-in, as well as the issues that the newer one actually was having. And it seems like the one at the transfer station, from what I'm being told, although it's a little leaky, it runs fine, you know?
So.
That's what I was told.
I will continue to vet this, so I don't know how to direct you to make a decision, because obviously, if it's beneficial for the transfer station, which I think was the original plan, but I would like to understand the problems. Maybe we can put this off for two weeks, and I can get the trade-in on the other one, and maybe have a list of what's wrong with the one that Chuck has. The new one's been ordered. I believe it's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so I don't have it in Opera. I only have, like I said, two forty-five, two fifty. You know, we're down to the nitty-gritty now. But I know Vicky had seven thousand dollars in her budget that I, that we put in there, because she needed a bucket. Her bucket's cracked on that loader. So she has some money that we may be able to get close enough to buy this, you know, to make it happen, if it makes the most sense. So maybe you want to just table that for me, and then I'll update you in two weeks.
That sounds good. All right, so we'll table that, move on to Agenda Item Five.
Thank you.
So this is session of vote whether to approve the use of Formula Grant funds for the initial setup of vertical phone system, the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four cents. And I looked at this, I don't really know what a vertical phone system is, I don't think.
Just the phone system, it's tied into the, that's a vertical phone, it's tied into the computers. It uses the Internet as a, just uses the Internet. Right now, they have Comcast phone systems that we pay per line, per month, and this actually overall will be cheaper, correct? Luann's really the guru on the phone.
Yeah, we've done this with a couple of places, right where they, I say "we," Luann, I don't want to take credit as "we." I remember I had all those crazy lines, because initially, there was like all these Comcast lines, and then you were trying to figure out which ones were actually being used, and then it turned over to this, so, yeah.
I remember that, yeah, that's all right. All right, any questions or concerns on this? I have no problem. All right, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of Formula Grant's funds for the initial setup for the vertical phone systems in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Agenda Item Six, Acknowledge Disclosure Form from Town Commissioner Deborah Petty. So this disclosure is just related to Debbie had the same lawyer that is, personal lawyer that is dealing with, you know, potential, yeah, a property that we're looking at renting, so just disclose that, which we appreciate.
Yes, thank you.
So we have acknowledged that, no vote needed there. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, discussion of vote to approve the lease to rent the property located at Unit Four, sixty-nine South Main Street as Town Hall Annex effective eleven fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
So I changed the date on this, because we're using Opera money to pay for it. So we have no other funds to pay for this. So in order to get a purchase order, you know, Opera has to be obligated by twelve thirty-one of this year. So I need a purchase order obligating the funds to pay for this rent through June. So I change, and of course, the agreement needs to match that. I know we've talked about if we have a town meeting prior to that, that we might bring, this is actually a license agreement. We might bring the lease before the town meeting, but financially, I needed this to be dated this way in order to obligate the funds through the end of June, and we don't, we won't, we will have to get the following year's funds at, you know, through the, through town meeting vote. And if we were to lease it, I could possibly get funds through town meeting, but I wanted to protect us, because we're not sure we're going to have a town meeting. So it's one of these things, I'm just trying to, a worst-case scenario, we don't, I need to obligate the funds through the end of the year.
That makes sense to me.
It's going to be paid for not by taxpayer dollars directly in town, right? So I guess it does make sense to continue it on a little bit longer, and it still will go to the townspeople at point, you know? So that's just been, you know, the thing we talked about, right, clarity.
Yep.
Taking it to the town.
Any questions or concerns?
No, it's just like we discussed before, this is Opera money, Opera money, not taxpayer money, and this is to improve the Town Hall in some way, some capacity, right? We're still talking about that, right?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, there's just so, so much benefit to us.
Yeah.
Having a little bit of extra space, free up some parking, it's accessible to the public, it's not far. The building, you know, will go into the departments, but it makes sense to have two inspektional service departments be there, so. It's going to give us some breathing room, a little bit, still unfortunately not enough, but it will do something in the short term.
Absolutely.
Better than we were. I think we'll just have to talk a little bit about how we get people to understand where it is, because, you know, you know it's, it's still going to happen regardless, but we don't want people showing up to Town Hall to do some sort of service if they don't have to. If they already know this department's over there, and that's who they need to go to see, hopefully, we can do something to save them that step of trying to come to our office first to find out that it's been moved.
I'll work on that. Don't forget, both those departments are on online permitting now, so all the contractors that come in have an account. I wonder if there's an email blast that they can send out saying we're moving, you know, this is where we're at. But most, a lot of foot traffic now, I mean, there isn't as much foot traffic, right? A lot of it is now online. We still have the homeowners that come in for the questions and whatnot, those are the ones that are coming in, so we'll put it on Facebook.
How much so are Facebook, how much does it cost for us to send out those postcards to the town meeting?
About eighteen hundred, yeah.
I was just thinking. But that just doesn't make sense, really, we can do the one call, I mean, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of stuff that we could do that would be easy.
Did the census mailing go out?
We can get that crazy arm guy that you inflate. Just have him say Town Hall right on it.
We can check into the census mailing.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think.
We've got to communicate it, yeah.
Yeah, any way to communicate it. It's still going to, you're still going to have people who show up, because not everyone comes from town to do that stuff. So there's always, it's still going to be an issue, but.
Yeah, it'll be, as always, any change, it'll take a little bit of time. We, even with this agreement, we have to, we have to outfit the room, right? So there's some construction that's going to have to happen before this actually happens, so we do have a little bit of lag time, so.
Okay, all right, so any other questions or concerns?
No.
No.
All right, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the license to rent the property located at Unit Four, sixty-nine South Main Street as Town Hall Annex effective eleven fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four through six thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My agenda's here, okay. Now, Agenda Item Eight, discussion and vote on what departments to occupy the Town Hall Annex. So Deb.
I've been, I have talked to a couple of the departments within the town to try to vet the interest. And, you know, it seems to be the building and the Board of Health makes sort of the most sense in terms of, they go hand-in-hand with each other, they're both on online permitting, so like if they need the tax collector to sign off on their permit saying their taxes are paid, it's done electronically now, so it's not a physical paper that they have to go between departments to do. So those two departments, and they're on my second floor, so this will now make them much more accessible, ADA accessible, which we don't have at the Town Hall. And ultimately, we've talked about, you know, this, we're going to try to have them move out, we'll be able to renovate the second floor, or at least half of the second floor, and continue to move offices to try to do some renovations to get some more space. Ultimately, I need to get the clerks some more space, so I will move non-customer facing department probably from the first floor to the second floor, and then give her a little more space. Ultimately, we still don't have enough space, but it will give everybody, as I always do, like their critical need right now, and hopefully, we can get through the next three or four years and get a new building underway, or at least a new annex to the Town Hall that we can accommodate.
More permanent solution, yeah.
So I, I, I think everybody, I don't have anybody fighting for the space, other than the Board of Health and the building, they really want to go.
So that, that's a big, too, because we don't want to, we're trying to help everyone here, we don't want to create any kind of, you know, unnecessary animosity or friction, exactly.
So I asked the clerk, I said, would you, would you all be interested? She said, no, I'd be happy if I get a little more space here.
Okay.
The assessor is happy with his office. I even asked the accountant, because you know, there's three of them in that, I'm like, Matt, do you have any interest? He's like, no.
Yeah, he lives right across the street from the Town Hall, it's probably could be.
But I mean, just even, you know, moving his office around the Town Hall in terms of trying to figure out how. We're okay in our office, I mean, again, we could use more space, but we're okay, and you know, water's very happy down there. I know they did say they need more space, so they're the one, one of the ones that I may entertain moving upstairs, depending on how the layout works. So I think, like I said, I don't think this decision will cause animosity from my conversations internally.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, for all the reasons you just brought up and we talked about, I think it's, you know, I think it makes sense to move them in those two. Something else we really haven't talked much about is those two offices are right next to each other, right? So it's not one from upstairs and one down, that we would then have to start trying to relocate people in order to make sense for renovation of an area, right? So we have those two offices that are side-by-side, we can renovate that area or whatever, so I think it just makes sense.
Right, ultimately, if that whole side of the building goes, you know, ideally, if it all works out, once they're done, let's say we do construction on that side, move the selectmen's office and the accounts to the other side, redo that office, and now you have the whole second floor done.
Yep.
So that's the ideal thing. You had to renovate it, no matter what we do with the building, right? Whether you're for or against this, renovation needs to be made internally as well, right? Which have not been done in many generations, right? So this is a good way of doing that, not using our money to rent out of space is the best-case scenario we could have gotten.
Yep. All right, so building and Board of Health. Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to have the Building Department and the Board of Health occupy the Town Hall Annex.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Agenda Item Nine, this is whether or not to increase the twenty-four, twenty-five snowplow rates for an additional ten dollars an hour. It seems that it's been pretty slow getting people to sign up, we only have a handful. So I have no issues with this?
No, no, and Chuck, you know, in my talks with Chuck, he had said that they were, you know, talking to other towns, and they're still, you know, everyone else still seemed to be more, but he felt like this ten dollars would be enough to help get us in the area with people. But, you know, there was two at this point, we're now up to four, but four's still not even anywhere close enough to make the way we need to, so.
I have a feeling this might be revisited, you know? But okay, I think it's a good start.
I was just thinking the same thing.
And that's what, he, he was the one, you know, let's be clear, he came up with this ten dollars feeling like it was a good point, right? So I think, I think it's, hopefully, it gets enough.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know.
I mean, maybe people just, it's been so warm, maybe people haven't even thought about, right? So maybe like, you know, but I think that just ten dollars definitely makes, at least it's a start, so let's start there. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No? Okay, so that, I'll entertain a motion to increase the winter two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five snowplow rates to add an additional ten dollars an hour.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda Item Ten is the four snowplow applications we've got for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five seasons. I'm going to need help with this last name, Wayne.
Proto, I think.
Cruto?
Yeah.
Crudo?
Proto.
Yeah. One of those.
Yeah, A is Wayne Crudo, B Dylan Henrique, C Shane Tovars, and D Nate's Oil Burning Services, Inc. Have they applied, have they given all their proper documentation?
Yeah.
That's why the packet's so giant.
Yes.
Yes, you're a big one this week.
They vet all of that information.
Okay, awesome. So any questions or concerns?
No.
No. All right, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the four snowplow applications listed earlier for the twenty-four, twenty-five plow season.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Eleven, discussion of vote whether to approve the following Class Two motor vehicle license renewals for two thousand and twenty-five. So we have A, Bob Motors, Bob's Motor Works, B Craig Jacob Rall doing business as Evolution Auto Sales, Inc., C Michael B Burns and John F. Mello, DBA JM Auto Sales, D Roger L. Denault, doing business as Buller's Garage, and C Alfred R., wow, Mop, it's raised garage. No, I know these families so well, Mop Fazir, I've never seen it written down. I know the Mop Fazir very well, it's so funny. Okay. It's like a same thing happening last time with that. I know how to say a word until I read it, and then I can't say it out loud. Mop Fazir, okay. So any questions or concerns with these?
No.
No.
They all have got their paperwork in and did all the things they need to do?
Correct.
Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Class Two motor vehicles listed in the packet.
Motion made, second.
All in favor? All in favor? Long day, folks. Okay, now, this is going to be another tough one. So Agenda Item Twelve, discussion of vote whether to approve the following Class Three motor vehicle license renewals for two thousand and twenty-five. We have DB Fabrication, Inc., DBA Bug Stevens Autos, Freetown Auto, B Danielle Kripsim, DBA Hometown Automotive, C Jeffrey Raposa, DBA East Freetown Auto Salvage, D Big Wheels Truck Sales, Inc., E Joseph F. Costa III, DBA JNT Auto Salvage, F John Broden, DBA CSA Auto Parts, G Petty Auto Salvage LLC, and H Milton S. Westgate Jr. and Milton S. Westgate III, DBA Westgate Auto. Luann, they got all their paperwork in, everything's good?
Absolutely.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the Class Three motor vehicle license renewals for two thousand and twenty-five for A through H on the agenda.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda Item Thirteen, discussion of vote whether to approve the auctioneer's license for Joseph F. Costa III, DBA JNT Auto Salvage, Inc. renewal for two thousand and twenty-five. Questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the auctioneer's license for Joseph F. Costa III, DBA JNT Auto Salvage, Inc. renewal for two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Agenda Item Fourteen, discussion of vote what to do with town buildings for the Friday after Thanksgiving. This is an interesting one.
It's always the same one, right? We, if we stay open to the public, a lot of departments may not have staff, because people take their personal days. So in the past, we have voted to close the building to the Town Hall to the public, but be open so they don't have to use their personal time, they can work or they cannot work.
And that's what's always made them happy, right?
That's the Town Hall, but there's, you know, the libraries and the, and the transfer station and the COA. So I believe the transfer station's going to be staffed, Vicky told me she's working. The libraries work on that day, they stay open, and then it's the COA, right? Was she requesting it be closed?
She was requesting it to be, the Senate to be closed, I'm sorry, wait a minute, we plan to keep the senior center open the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay, so I guess it's just the Town Hall that's requesting to be closed to the public. But if anybody wants to take the day off, they have to use whatever PTO they have. And that's what we've done in the past. And it's sort of one of those catch-twenty-twos, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to have Town Hall open and half the department's not staffed, it's just not a good look. So I'd rather say, you know, close it to the public facing and.
All right.
What stinks there is a lot of people have the day off, and they, that's the time they take to go do these things that they can't normally do, it's tough.
Yeah, no, I get it.
What do you do if they, we're not going to have employees there, we can't force them to do that.
Can't force them to safety, too, all right?
Yeah.
It's definitely a catch-twenty-two.
Yep.
That's why.
But I think we avoid a lot of potential confusion if we just close the building.
I don't recall people complaining, like the few years I've been here, we've done this the same consistently. I can tell you, I won't be there the day after Thanksgiving, but I don't know that we've gotten any public complaints, have we, that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
That somebody came and, you know, I, I mean, if they did, I could see the frustration, though, because people are inside working, and, but I don't think, I think most people just assume you're not open that day.
Yep. All right, well, I think it makes sense to close the building, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the Town Hall to the public for the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Fifteen, discussion of vote whether to declare the Highway Department's two thousand and eleven Ford F-250 with plow as surplus, and then decide what to do with the vehicle and plow. And I don't remember specifically seeing anything on this one.
We tabled this because the Water Department was.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right.
They're going to wait to see if our two thousand and fourteen F-150 comes available from the Facilities Department, because his new truck should be coming.
Okay.
And that's a much better truck.
So we still going to take the candidates then again to see?
No, this, I think we want to just declare a surplus and put on muni bid.
And for the plow, too?
I think so.
It comes as a unit.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to declare the Highway Department's two thousand and eleven Ford F-250 with plow as surplus and to post it on, list it on muni bid.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need anything specifically about minimum?
I was just about to ask that.
I was going to say, what do you want me to put it on for?
I have no, like, do we?
I think Chuck's.
Twenty-five hundred?
I think Chuck said that he thought it would get around four.
Yeah, well, just put twenty-five hundred, because the last thing we want to do is put it up for four and have no one do it, and then we have to come back and fix it. Let someone build it up to four, if he thinks that's what it'll get.
So I'll just make a motion saying that, just to make your life easier. So I'll entertain a motion to list the Ford F-250, mentioned Agenda item Fifteen, with a minimum bid of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Sixteen, ambulance abatements and write-offs. So for October, total value is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents. And we collected like eighty-six thousand, I think, if I remember correctly, is that?
I think it was sixty-nine, let me see. For October, the month of October was sixty-nine thousand, three hundred, eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
All right, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatements and write-offs for two thousand and twenty-four, the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item Seventeen, this is the sign that was donated. So Derek Fernandez, owner of Diamond Signs in New Bedford, donated some signs that indicate where the police station and fire station are, so to point people in the right direction, and they look really nice. So this is for us to, this motion, or this agenda item is to us accept the in-kind donation, which we really appreciate. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No, looks nice.
Yeah, no, it does.
And maybe like we could write him a letter, a thank-you letter?
Yeah.
I think we'd like to sign that maybe the next, because we really do appreciate it.
Maybe something down, down the road, if there's a pole right there, I can see the back, the electrical line holding the pole down, maybe should get a light out there, so that it shines all the time at night.
Yeah, is it supposed, is it reflective, though, so that like?
It looks reflective, but when I was pulling in, when I was getting closer and closer, I was waiting for it, and I think it could be a little brighter.
Okay, all right, something we can look into for sure. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance, oh, sorry, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve, to accept the in-kind donation of signage valued at six hundred dollars by Derek Fernandez, owner of Diamond Signs in New Bedford, Mass.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Agenda item Eighteen, discussion of vote whether to disconnect the electric at the kennel at the transfer station?
So you know, we have that kennel, but we haven't used it in years, I don't know how long, since I've been here, I don't know how long prior to that. So I believe there's water in there, so I will ask Carl to drain that, so we have to keep the heat on, on some level? So I'll ask him to drain the water system and then be able to shut the electric off, so that we can just save the funds, because we don't use the kennel.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the dogs that used to go there at one point, now all go to Lakeville, right? We signed an agreement with Lakeville that they have a much nicer heated kennel. We signed an agreement with Lakeville that they have a much nicer heated kennel that these dogs can go to.
Yeah.
Right, so.
If it's full of water, that sounds pretty bad.
Yeah. If you haven't yet to reconnect it down the road, if ever changed our minds, we can always reconnect it, but at this point there's no point if you're just paying for that extra heat, it's already.
Yeah.
Well, if there is heat in there.
Well, it's also probably dangerous. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to disconnect the electric to the kennel at the transfer station.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, moving on now, going to personnel.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Alright, personnel board, item agenda number nineteen, acknowledge the resignation of Courtney Brightman from the Freetown Cultural Council effective twelve fourteen twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Courtney, uh for your work at the cultural council. We know you're busy with the school committee, so good luck in your in your future. Item number twenty, discussion and vote where to appoint Rachel Petty as recording clerk for Economic Development, Building Committee, Finance Committee, Council of Aging Library Committee, Community, sorry, Council of Aging Library, Community Building Committee, Bylaw Review Committee, and Commission on Disability effective eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four. I'm excited to have uh Ms. Petty come come on board and record some of our meetings for us. Any concerns, discussions, or comments? Alright. I entertain the motion to appoint Rachel Petty as recording clerk for Economic Development, Building Committee, Finance Committee, Conservational Library, Community Building Committee, Bylaw Review Committee, and Community Commission on Disability effective eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving along, item agenda twenty-one, discussion and vote where to appoint Edward P. Walsh as seasonal plow driver effective eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four through four thirty twenty twenty-five. Um, he's another one of those individuals that is good to have on staff. And so, as we just discussed, we need plow drivers, so this is a a good addition.
And he was, uh, if I remember him correctly, he was a previous town employee. And now, you know, he's coming back and will help us with this kind of during the season. He'll be driving one of our trucks, so that's why he's not listed as having.
Yeah, exactly. It's different than than just the like subcontractors.
Yeah. I guess I I I know you, you guys know that, everyone up here knows that, but I say some things obviously, so, you know, people at home listening can hear it.
Of course.
No, I think this is a great idea. This this uh supports the town and everyone always says it. Our roads, you can tell when you're in Freetown. Right? You can tell you're in Freetown because we have excellent drivers and we have a good DPW, so this adds to that. That said, uh, I entertain the motion to appoint Edward P. Walsh as seasonal plow driver effective eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four through four thirty twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Item twenty-two, discussion of vote whether to approve the revised planning technician job description. So a- as we all know, uh, our town, our town planner um got another position, so now I'm turning looking at all the positions, and this is one of them that shopping the pencil on it, making sure that the the description and responsibilities of the person doing this position will fit the department as is, right, with current staff. And and as we move forward, it it makes a clear line of sand of what who does what moving moving forward. So um, and of course, this this employee would be in the direction of the planning board and subject to review and everything else. So this is just, again, as we've been doing other things like positive procedures, this is cleaning up the the language of what this person does day to day and how they report and everything, which board they report to. So another day of doing business in the town of Freetown. You guys have a chance to read it, any questions or concerns? Um, if not tonight, if it comes up, I'm sure Debbie uh or myself are more happy to discuss with you. Or I can't discuss with you, but she can. So.
Yeah, looks good to me.
I mean, I read through it and there's nothing that stands out to me, right? So if there's nothing that stands out to me, that's good. Because I don't remember everything word for word as to where it was before, but, you know, it looks good to me. It all makes sense to me, is guess what I should say.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, it's just make, puts the person in the clear direction of, hey, this is what, this is your day to day, here's your path. So, that said, I entertain the motion to approve the revised planning technician job description.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda twenty-three, discussion and vote whether to approve the animal control officer job description. Um, again, we're going through you know, all the 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 different descriptions of people, what people do day to day. And this is the other one that we discussed with the ACO uh over months and and the Clark, Deb, and the administrative staff to make sure that, again, we know exactly what the duties and essential functions and job descriptions for this position is. And this is just that, cleaning it up and.
Yeah, I don't think that we ever had an approved approved job description on this. We have created it, and I don't think it ever got approved, so we're just, we're trying to go through and approve these things so that we do have them. Um, I know we've been working on, we worked a lot on that. Last year or the year before, I can't remember, but these are a couple ones just seem to not, I know we worked on it, but didn't get through to the board, so we're trying to get that done now.
Yeah, I know the discussions we had in in the office with with Vicki and everything, it's just all of them needed to be, we kinda looked at it going, what's in this? What do they do? What do you do day to day? I remember having those discussions like, so tell us about your day. Because some of it's really, you got a call, you take off, but what do you do in that meantime and before and after? So, just clears that up.
Gotcha.
And someday might change it again. You never know. Um, so that said, entertain the motion to approve the animal control officer job description.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda twenty-four, vote and approve the assistant animal control officer description. Again, from the meetings we have with the animal control officer over over a period of time and with, again, the administrative staff, Deb and and everybody else. Um, it's a lot of work for one person. Um, and as we're all, as a, as the sun goes up and goes down, we get day older, and as we get older, the job isn't as easy or as fun as it used to be many times, right? Having an assistant makes it all much better, and we are growing as a town, we we're, it seems like we're getting more and more pets. So having an assistant uh was something that would benefit both the town and the animal control officer as is. Because as you can imagine, for every call you get, there's paperwork associated with that call. So and that's either at the local level or at or at the municipal court level, there's always something going on with the ACO. So having someone there to back up in the event of vacation, sickness, or paperwork, having this this description is uh is paramount to that role. That said, I entertain the motion to approve the assistant animal control officer job description.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
More of the same for item agenda twenty-five, discussion and vote where to approve the revised principal clerk job description. This one, I I am struggling to remember what the change was, but like all of them, they they're all updating what the roles and responsibilities are for that position. Uh, we we have clerks, principal clerks, and 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 different types of clerks, but the principal clerk's position is in scope in what their functions are, again, just updating it, cleaning it up, and making sure we're following the letter of the law and any union agreements that goes with it.
Yeah, I think, again, this is one that was created. When they created the position, we found the description, but it didn't seem to be approved by the selectmen. So.
Okay.
Uh, a few, a few amendments to it, but basically it was done, it just was never sort of solidified. We're trying to get everything solidified.
Makes sense.
I agree. Entertain the motion, I entertain the motion to approve the revised principal clerk job description.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda twenty-six, discussion and vote on the hourly pay rate to set for assistant animal control officer. Um, I thought I had it, wrote it down.
This is just a a bylaw job. You can, you set the pay rate. Um, be on a sort of as needed basis.
I was looking, I don't see anything. Do we have any idea what towns around us are doing or whatever? I mean, I guess I don't know what, you know.
There used to be a chart in the in the bylaw, so I was looking at the bylaw today for something else, and the chart in there had this, now these are two thousand and fifteen rates, so they're ten years old, but they sort of had the animal control officer at like twenty dollars or twenty-one dollars an hour, and this one at fourteen dollars an hour. So I I would say somewhere around um maybe eighteen or nineteen dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour like in there, you know what I mean, given like where we've moved sort of everybody.
Yeah, cuz I, I, you know, I sit there and start trying to think about, well, you know, a lot of times these people are showing up in their own personal vehicles, right, to 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 deal with this. So if they're having to use their own personal vehicles to show up, you know, whatever, I don't know, does it make sense? I would wanna make sure, and it's as needed, so it's not like it's gonna be.
Yeah, one of the caveats that I I I I think would make sense is that they get a two-hour minimum. So they show up and they come and they drive, and they show up and in fifteen minutes they're able to do what they need to do, they still get paid for two hours, right? Um, and again, sometimes it'll be, you know, Lisa, when she's chasing a pig down the road, she just might need a second pair of hands. And sometimes when Lisa's goes on vacation, we do rely on other towns a lot, and we have budgeted for this in the last two years. I just was trying to find an agreement. I was trying to figure it out. So I finally just, I talked to town council, it's like, you already have that position on the books. I'm like, oh, I didn't know that, so it's just sort of one of these things. So I don't have a rate for you. I I um.
So I just did a quick Google. Secon has a job listing right now for assistant animal control officer for a full-time job. It's twenty-seven dollars an hour.
I don't think Lisa makes that, though. Do you have any idea what Lisa makes?
No, I I I'm just saying, that's a full-time job. That's different, right? It's forty hours a week. Yeah. Um. Farver has one. Twenty-five bucks an hour.
Would we pay the the gatekeepers? What was it, the boat staff, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen an hour? The boat ramp?
Boat ramp is eighteen for the attendance and twenty-one, twenty-two for the manager.
Then we brought everybody else up to that, didn't we? Then we bring it up to that, or fifteen, between fifteen and eighteen, I forget what it is.
It's eighteen for the boat ramp.
So I I would think that that's the minimum we, right, minimum pay for most employees?
I guess so. My my issue is, is once again, if you're gonna work at the boat ramp, you're gonna be there for several hours and make it a little more worth it. To your point, we're gonna do two-hour minimum, which makes it a little bit better, but if I'm getting a call at one AM and I'm being told that I have to go drive to the neighboring town to make thirty bucks, my pillow's gonna sound pretty good. So, um, you know, I would think a minimum we have to do is twenty bucks.
Yeah, I was saying twenty, twenty bucks an hour.
We'll probably pay mileage, and there's, believe it or not, the people want this, they like this, because they like animals.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I don't think it's really about the money for people on this, but I still think we have to be fair, and I think twenty dollars an hour feels right to me.
Yeah, basically, an uncalled employee, when something is, like, you're getting a call, something's wrong, right? That's basically what that position entails, so we have to make sure we compensate.
It's not a job for everyone.
Right.
You can start it somewhere, and whoever we hire or whatever, they they can come in, and if they really feel.
Those will be interesting job interviews, you know, cuz I'm sure they, there's gonna be a lot of animal talk and like their experiences and everything else would be interesting.
It's a selectmen's vote, so um I can tell you, we only budgeted a thousand dollars, so um.
Yeah, but I don't think it's gonna be something that's.
And I don't think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be periodic. It's just gonna be, like you said, Lisa goes on vacation, we have nobody to cover, really.
Right.
We rely on Lakeville, they're wonderful to us. They do a lot for us. And Lisa does have people who help her. Um, so.
Right.
This will be a way for to compensate those people. Some of them are already helping her, you know, hopefully.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I know, she's she's come to us before for, you know, different things.
Well, it's tough, even employees that work at town hall, police department, everywhere, right? It's if there's no one to cover you, it gets tough to take your vacations, right? It takes, it's tough to take your personal time off, right? It's so, only having a single point of contact, great for everybody, because they know who to call, but a kind of unfair to her, because now she, you know, she's kinda hampered of where she can go, how far she can go. Having this other person now, you know, she still, still, that still might happen, but should alleviate some of that down the road. Quality of life is much better.
So I, my my board is twenty.
Twenty?
Yep.
Alright, and again, we have a thousand in the budget for it, and if we ever need to adjust, you can always revisit it, and then, of course, town meeting down the road. It's a good, not experiment, but it's a good um next step for this position. Um, so twenty dollars it is, a discussion vote, well, not yet until we vote. But discussion vote, so the I contend motion to set the pay rate of twenty dollars for the assistant animal control officer.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so twenty dollars, excellent. Discussion vote on hourly pay rate for the seasonal plow driver. From what I saw from the most recent one, we hit, that we just did, Mr. Um, Mr. Walsh, it was, what was he getting? What do we put him at? Again, one thing that we like to do is make sure we're fair um across the board, and it's, you know, that's something that we've been making sure we, that that's consistent across the board, um, is we're fair with everybody. So right now, the player, the pay rate that we set for Mr. Walsh was twenty-three an hour. So is that something that we're looking at doing the same, or um, cuz again, he's 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 plowed before. So he's got experience, he knows the roads, he knows the equipment, he knows the people, he, you know, that's like, versus someone new. So do we do a tiered rate, you know, plus or minus based on experience? Do we set a maximum pay rate? Right?
Well, I I think Chuck had made a recommendation, so I'm assuming that's based on what, cuz he worked for us last year as well. I don't, I I don't know what he was thinking, but.
Was Chuck, was, what was Chuck? I'm trying to find Chuck's recommendation right now.
Chuck said that um Mr. Walsh has expressed an interest and willingness to return this winter to help plow the municipal complex in the Memorial Drive area. Therefore, I respectfully request that Mr. Walsh be appointed as seasonal plow operator at the rate of pay of twenty-three dollars per hour.
Yeah, and um, you know, parking lots can be tough as far as, you know, back, a lot of back and forth and so those guys will take a lot of time, and it's a lot of time off of the roads, cleaning up the roads to clean up those facilities, so.
Yeah, going around vehicles and everything else.
So I'd rather, I mean, twenty-three dollars an hour, it's right, what you said before, that it's right in line with the other guy and keeps everything kinda even keel.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay with twenty-three, and it's Chuck's recommendation.
Right, and in the interviews we do with anybody, he'll be there, and if we need to adjust that pay rate, you know, up or, well, down, not up. We can always discuss that later, but for right now, I think twenty-three is a a fair number. Right? And again, it might be like the other plow drivers, we we may need to increase that depending.
Yeah, but I don't think you're gonna have anymore.
Down the road.
Seasonal, you know, type of people like this, so.
Right. Okay, well, we'll set it, we'll discuss it at that level, and if we need to adjust it down the road, and that's, so be it. Alright, I entertain the motion to set the pay rate of twenty-three dollars an hour for seasonal plow driver for the town of Freetown.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna make a motion to recess in two?
Yep. Uh, yeah, we'll do signatures, actually, and then, great idea. And pretty good on the timing too, and you know, we only got ten minutes to spare between.
Yeah. This is just you. License for sixty-nine thousand.
Did you change that to have him sign it?
It didn't have like something stuck there. Is that good?
It's fine.
So plus vehicles, and this is so plus, that's going to Berkeley.
Increase.
You are, that one last time too. That is your snowplow rate increase.
It's funny, this truck, yeah, it's a dying thing about people learn how to shift gears and everything else.
That's how I learned.
I was at a Home Depot about a month ago, and some car couldn't get their car started, and they couldn't, and the way they parked, they couldn't get a bat, someone's battery close enough. So we can jumpstart it, I mean, how do we do that? I'm looking at the guy going, don't you know how to drive your car?
I learned to drive stick when I was like fourteen, Berkeley. Jackie Chamberlain's house. It made me uh.
Pick up with the plow.
I either had to like carry trash like a mile behind their house to the dumpsters, or learn how to drive a pickup truck that was a four-speed.
When I get my first license and my job, my mom worked nights, so she slept all day, so it was like, I can take the car, but it was a stick shift.
You gotta learn.
So I just got in it and drove it, bucked it, stalled it, and now I can drive a standard.
Yeah. Not that I ever would, but in the event I ever buy my my, one of my son's a car, it'd be a stick shift.
You can't, well, there's almost nothing now. The Corvettes don't even come to end and then.
So my Audi is a, either war.
Yeah, so my, my, mine too. Mine has like the paddle shifters up there on the steering wheel.
I don't know how to do it. I'm like.
Don't worry, the lamps. Don't worry, the Lam's same way. I, I hit my shifter all the time and go, ah, what happened? My D eight, the ADA, ADA thing in my car and it's like. She used to frame this one on the wall. First official, boom.
Be another disclosure coming in regards to that as well. She's ready to roll.
Good, get you happy for her. You had it all ready with the twenty dollars an hour.
Never told me that, but I don't know if you had said it because I'm, I had the twenty and then I put twenty-three because it was.
That's funny.
I think you had said that you thought.
I just looked at it and I didn't double take him.
What was that for the, uh, ACO?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah. No, the seasonal plow driver. No, wait, no, no, I'm sorry, the ACO.
Like I remember the discussions, it was a while ago, it was just, stuff thinking back in times like, huh, huh, what was that discussion? Oh, I know, like how long ago that, that must have been.
The, the microphone can just move, so you can move it around if you're gonna speed.
I have been trained over the years how to stack those paperwork for you, okay?
About ten minutes of signatures.
Been trained.
It's perfect. So we can't start the public hearing until seven-thirty.
No, seven o'clock.
Seven, seven, sorry, seven o'clock, but usually have to wait after the meeting and sign all this paperwork. So now let's give us a little opportunity to do it. In the middle.
Hello, Wayne, welcome back.
Long time, Ross.
My watch on this. Chief?
All right, so we still have five minutes. So I'll turn motion that we go in for a five-minute recess. We're turning at seven PM.
Motion made. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, I have seven PM. All right, so we are now back from recess. Um, today we have three public hearings, so I will. Open the first public hearing, or actually open and continued, so. Um, I'm gonna read the public notice, which is continued from November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. So August ninth.
Continued from August nineteenth.
What did I say?
November eighteenth.
Oh, continue to, geez, sorry. Continued from, uh, August ninth, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. So notice hereby given that the, uh, hearing will be held in August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the police station community room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Massachusetts. At seven PM to review the class-two motor vehicle license held by Chappahead Industries, Inc., DBA Chappahead Custom Cycles. Thirteen County Road, East Freetown, Mass, O two seven one seven, signed by the Freetown Boris Sleckman. So is there anyone here representing Chappahead? No? That's interesting.
That is interesting.
Okay. And they, they were obviously knew that this was continued to tonight, right?
We did it at the last meeting.
Yeah, so I guess in the meantime, chief, I know there were some issues at this location, um. We have a lot of police reports in our packet and, uh, obviously there's a lot of folks here last time kind of voicing their concerns. Um, any kind of updates on?
Sure, just to give you, uh, a little bit of what have taken place after the last meeting. Uh, myself and a number of other, uh, town department heads sat with, uh, Mister Gagny and his, uh, legal represent- uh, representative. And, um, we went over the issues regarding the hosted events that he had at the, uh, location on County Road. Uh, specifically, we discussed, uh, special events planning, if he inclined to. Um, apply for s- some other event at that location, what he would need to do. And the impact on the town and whether it was myself, the fire chief, the, uh, building inspector. And even the Board of Health all chimed in on, um, our concerns and, uh. What we would be looking for to make recommendations if he decided to go forward with some type of event. Um, between Mister Gagny and, uh, his repres- representative, uh, they completely understood, uh, the process. Um, it sounded like to me at that meeting that he wasn't interested in going forward with an event. At his, uh, current business location, which I think, um, for the community at large, specifically in that area. Uh, I think, uh, not having that event would bring a lot of peace to that low, that, uh, area. Which I think everybody there was looking for. There was a, um, a complaint submitted to, uh, Fall River District Court. Um, currently the offenses are, are pending. They're open for a period of time and as long as, um. Mister Gagny agrees to what, uh, was, um. Uh, discussed at the clerk magistrate's hearing, um, it should stay pretty quiet in that general location. That makes.
Yep.
Enough sense.
So you haven't heard anything since?
Uh, I have not received any other complaints over there. I've been reviewing the log. It seems to be pretty quiet. Things are back to norm. Um, I'm hoping as the winter, winter gets colder, we're not gonna have any possibilities of an event happening there, but, uh, things have been quiet.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's funny, as I drove by the other day and I noticed that the road is starting to look a little more like itself and there's not as many tire marks in the road. Which is always a good sign, right? That it's something, you know, that it's kind of quieted down, so.
Yeah, I think the consistent traffic, as you know, just driving over it kind of.
Yeah, wears.
Clears that stuff up, but yes.
Yeah, it's, it's a process, but I do commend, um, this business, um, working with us, right? That's why we wanted all along, making sure that we're all on the same page as far as what a business and what neighbors feel like are here in this town. And, uh, I'm glad to hear there doesn't, hasn't been anything going on since then and, and I hope him continue success, you know, it's a, it's a. Pretty popular area, pretty popular, uh, motorcycle place, so.
Yeah, I think the business and Mister Gagny realized the, the true impact that had happened with these events going on there and, um. And again, he has expressed that he doesn't want to go any further with any type of, uh, future event like that at his location, so. I hope that's true, you know, I hope, you know, nothing changes, um. He appears to be a man of his word, so let's, uh, give him that opportunity and hopefully he continues with a successful business there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. I, I just, so my, I'm usually glass half-full, but if I'm gonna be glass half-empty. I'm gonna say that once, you know, if it quiets down, it's over the winter and it comes into next year. If he decides to hold another event thinking now it's kind of, you know, gone to the wayside, I just feel like we need to make sure that, you know. We make him, make sure, make, make it very well-known that we will, um, rule not in his favor next time. And I think that would be a pretty, uh, easy thing for me to say, right? I mean, the, the board itself seemed like. We were pretty aggravated with what was happening. So I just don't want to see this go away for now, but then come back. On you guys in six months or a year or whatever, you know, that if they're gonna do it, they do it right through the proper channels and then that way you guys all know about it and. You know, I, I, I really hope that that's the way it is and to your point, he's a man of his word and learned his from mistake, you know.
Give you a better sense, I mean, the, uh, the complaint that was submitted to court is basically gonna be kept open for a year. Now, if something should change where he creates an activity, that changes the agreement with the, uh, what was said at the hearing. So we may revisit, uh, the complaint. So, um, I tend to believe he's gonna follow suit and do the right thing because this is just, again, too much aggravation for himself to even consider. You know, causing more of an issue at that location. So. Issues are still pending, but giving him a chance to do the right thing for that year, to make sure.
That does make me feel better, chief. Thank you.
The good news is too, now he understands the process of, uh, applying for an entertainment license, right? Like, like Profile Tavern, right? They have an entertainment license. They can't just throw a band out there. We sign that license every year. So now that he knows that's, um. Working with the community, right? Working with the town, making sure that they're prosperous. You know, we're not saying don't do A, B, C, but let's do it the right way. And notify everybody that needs to be notified.
I agree.
And then, Luanne, all the necessary paperwork has been filed?
For the renewal?
Yep.
I put it on the December second, um, so you weren't, didn't have to discuss that tonight.
Okay, but yeah, yeah, just, I guess let the public know that, you know, all, all the required paperwork has been filed.
Right. You'd have an option at that meeting if something changed between now and two weeks from now. Or three weeks from now, you know what I mean? If somebody said, hey, we missed the meeting, there's an issue there. You could always address it before renewing their license for next year.
Okay.
I don't expect that to happen.
So, okay, so that's important decision. So we're not voting tonight on actually renewing the license?
I don't think you need to vote. I think this was part of that public hearing because we were looking at this back in August when, when we had all the complaints. I think tonight you could just, uh, recommend no action at this time. And then this will be coming before the board on December twelfth for, to renew their license for next year. So at that time as well, people, if they, if they, if they say, oh my God, I missed it, or, um, they could come and make a complaint. But it sounds like it's totally quieted down and there hasn't been any new incidences.
Is there anyone here? Any of the neighbors here or anyone?
I am the absolute next-door neighbor. Uh, that business used to belong to my father.
Yep, and has it been, you're, you're happy? Are you?
I'm more than happy. They're the best neighbors I could have.
Okay, no, that's good.
I do have to say that to everyone.
Just for the record, sir, can you just say your name?
Uh, my name is Jan Henry Domigala.
Nice to meet you, sir.
And I live at Eleven County Road, right next door.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know, we're, the, the original reason why we had this discussion is for the neighbors, right? Making sure that the neighbors, not just yourself, but everybody around there is. You can live a lot, uh, beside this business and still have a place to grow your family. That's what our concern is.
I bought a motorcycle from him, uh, what, two years ago, right? But that's, yeah, you know.
All right, well, we appreciate that. Thank you folks for coming by and, and again, we support our local business, but again, we also have families and everything else that want a, a good quality of life as well, so.
Absolutely.
Whenever, when all works together, it makes us, it makes us pleased, so.
Thank you.
All right, so.
I haven't closed the public hearing.
Yeah.
Make a recommendation that there's no action at this time.
Yeah, so I need a motion to close it? I think so.
Yeah, because you still have the, um, public hearing open.
Yep, so I'll, I'll turn a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then, um, I guess I'll also entertain a motion that we take no action tonight. Related to the class-two motor license for Chappahead. Um, it will be on the December.
Second.
Second meeting.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we still have five more minutes until I can start the next meetings. So I intend a motion, we go into a five-minute recess.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it's seven fifteen. We're now back from the, uh, recess. Uh, we have our second public hearing. Um, so I'm gonna read the public notice. So this was posted October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Notice hereby given, um, that an application has been filed to transfer restaurant, um. The restaurant's all-alcoholic beverage license from Independence Harbor Manager Brian Dennings to Narrows Road Events LLC. Manager Henry James. Public hearing to consider the above matter will be held on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven fifteen PM. At the, uh, Police Station Community Room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass, O two seven one seven. Uh, Freetown Boris Sleckman signs. The public hearing is now open. Um, there also was a letter that was provided that I'd like to read real quick. Um, so this is from Independence Harbor. Dear sirs, please accept this letter as my sincere recommendation that the Sapphire Event Group will be granted a transfer of the Independence Harbor Liquor License. As well as, uh, approval for the other related licenses. Regretfully, I'm unable to personally attend this meeting due to medical issues. It is my great pleasure to announce that Independence Harbor will soon beca- uh, will soon become part of the Sapphire Event Group. As owners and general manager of Independence Harbor since its inception in nineteen seventy-six, I will be transferring ownership of Independence Harbor to Sapphire Group. Um, Sapphire Event Group, SEG, in the coming weeks. SEG is a highly respected and accomplished company. To operate several renowned event venues in southeastern Massachusetts. Amy and John Sapphire are excited to acquire Independence Harbor and we, um, sincerely believe. They will do great things for Independence Harbor. I have enjoyed a very gratifying relationship with the town of Freetown these past forty-nine years. The support, respect has been, uh, that has been shown to me, to my family and to IH and its many employees over the years has been deeply appreciated. I am certain that Sapphire Event Group will prove to be highly valued asset to Freetown. So we just have some folks here, um, from both parties here, I'm assuming?
Uh, so I'm coun- my name's Kyle Viera. I'm counsel for the applicant.
Okay.
Um, and I have the manager on record with me today and then a member of the corporation as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Sleckman Matthews. Mrs. Denning is in the back row.
Hello.
Okay, um, so if it's helpful, you want to just give a little brief presentation, just so the board's kind of aware?
That'd be great.
Yep. So just to wear where, the applicant here is also, it's a local family-run business. They understand what it is. They have four other locations, built in South Shore. Been a business well over a decade. Um, Mister James here, he's oversees all of those, um, locations. But he's gonna be the manager on record here for this new location. He's gonna be there forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours a week. He's TIPS certified. Uh, very well aware of what his recommenda- or what he needs to do, um, in regards to a liquor license. Um, basically the establishment's gonna be run the same. The residents of Freetown are gonna see the same, same hours, same type of events. Um, essentially it's just going under new ownership. So this is a really straightforward transaction. They're very excited to get into the area and get started. Um, if there's any real questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them and I have, uh, Mister James can answer any questions for himself as well.
Awesome. Yeah, I got, I'll, I'll, I'll throw an obvious one out, out there. Um, the people at home are probably watching this going, is the name gonna change? Are you, any plans to change the name from Independence Harbor to Sapphire? We in Freetown, we're, we, we like our history and, um, Independence Harbor, uh, probably even these two individuals and probably keep all the way down the road. Down the line, I should say, probably some of this room that have gone to proms there, events and everything else.
My parents got married there.
Yeah, so, uh, very dear to the heart, so I'm gonna ask the question. Would, are you guys, any thoughts about changing the name?
Page one of the application, DBA is Independence Harbor.
Okay.
It's gonna be the same.
Just wanna make sure everyone's, thank you. It's easier to read it than it is to hear, so.
Anything else you want to add?
No, I mean, it's that, we're planning on having it stay the same, but I mean, things, we, we don't know.
We're not holding your feet to the fire. We're just, uh, there's some curiosity. I'm sure people listening at home, um, Independence Harbor has a lot of, uh. It pulls on the heartstrings. They have so many great memories in that place. So when they hear about it, they wanna make sure, I'm sure they get a, you know, it's like home, right?
Totally understand.
So, so my question, you have something? My question more relates around, um, staffing and stuff, so are all the current staffing staying?
That's the plan.
That's the plan, yeah. So you, are you gonna offer everyone their jobs currently? Just because a lot of the people that work there do live in town. So I just, you know, curiosity is, you know.
That's the plan is.
Absolutely the plan.
Yeah.
It's not our first venue, so every venue we go in, we try to keep everybody.
And that's usually, and we appreciate that, right? And that's usually as someone who deals with businesses, smaller format businesses into bigger, bigger. Bigger format businesses, you know, most people don't wanna come in and clean house, so to speak, you know, but it's something that people are gonna, gonna wonder. So, um, you know, and. To, to his point, there's a lot of, you know, people that have a lot of memories there and they wanna see things kind of stay the same. It's a beautiful business, right? The aesthetics from the outside is very nice and someone, two out of the three of us, well, actually three out of the five of us. Have to drive by it every day, right? And they do a great job with keeping up the grounds and everything and, um, you know. I, I have no doubt that you guys aren't gonna continue that on, so, um, that's the type of things I, I like to hear and, you know, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right.
Mister Sleckman, can I, um, there's also a pledge of inventory and license and the ABCC is very specific.
Yeah.
So when this is approved or if you do a vote to approve it, can you also vote to approve the pledge of inventory and license? Because the ABCC will kick it back if we don't have approval of both the transfer and the pledge of license and inventory.
And I, I don't have to specifically call them out.
And I don't have to specifically call them out, just say the pledge of inventory. Just make sure I write this down so I don't screw this up.
Now, will the ownership take place after the transfer of the liquor license is approved from ABCC?
Yeah, so this, we have to go back to the ABCC after you approve it, and then after that, we can do the final closing.
Yeah, I only ask because I know we're dealing with stores. It's, you know, we're usually four to six weeks out on, on ABCC. So I was just curious. It could be different.
Yeah, they're a little backed up, but that's what we're looking at, general timeline wise.
I'm not sure I understand this request for the vote to make for the pledge of the license and the inventory.
So the ABCC requires, so there's financing here? And the lender is, the pledge of the inventory and the license is part of the financing?
Financing. It has nothing to do with the liquor license.
Right, but because it's a pledge of license, it's an ABCC requirement. They're just sticklers, and that's why I'm just asking that specifically we read into the record that that's also being approved, because that's a requirement for this transaction.
Why would the selectmen approve a pledge of license and inventory? We have no idea what your inventory is. We have no idea what you're pledging. We have no idea. We didn't vet your legal agreement. That doesn't make any sense for the Board of Selectmen of Freetown to approve a pledge of license and inventory.
I mean, this is just typical, this is the way that these transactions typically work. Is there a specific, any specific documentation you would like, the asset per, I mean, I just want.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just, this is the first I've heard of it, so I'm trying to do a bit of it.
I looked at the agreement earlier. Is like the inventory just like literally like the catering kind of goods?
Like the bottles on hand?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
You know, it's on the actual application, so you have to approve the entire application. If the top of the application has the pledge of inventory and pledge of license checked off on there.
Give me a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. I don't know that it's going to be a huge deal, I guess. I don't know. The awkward silence.
Yeah. That's the sound of Deb Googling stuff. So that's the sound, he said awkward silence, that's the sound of Debbie Googling.
Yeah, I'm Googling because I, just like I said, I've not heard this. And I understand the need to do it to get financing for your client.
Yeah.
But I don't underneath, I don't understand why the selectmen approve that, because the selectmen have no knowledge of what you have for inventory. We have no idea. And why would we approve the pledge of inventory? It just doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to me. I know it's probably not seeming like a big deal to you, but it doesn't.
Yeah, it's not, and I understand exactly. I understand that you have concerns about it.
They run the town of Freetown.
Right, but the ABCC needs.
With the sale of your business, of your client's business. They have nothing to do with that. This is the transfer of a liquor license. They do have, you know, they do approve those, and I can understand the need to come before them for that reason, but I don't understand this. And I just want to be careful.
So I guess I'm wondering, because I know with the other side, you know, not the entertainment side, when a license transfers, so does the need for responsibility for a liquor license, right? So if they owe money, they have to take that money. They have to take the inventory that's on hand because now the person doesn't, no longer has the right to hold that inventory. I'm wondering if this is one of the same. You know, do you understand what I'm saying, Trevor?
Yeah.
So they, they have to take the inventory as part of the license as well as any debt obligations associated to it. Because the ABCC won't offer them a license without it.
Yeah, because.
So I'm thinking that's what this is actually referring to. And I know that's common with the other side.
I mean, if it helps, I mean, we're going to be back, if you deny it and say we're not going to approve the pledge of like, we're going to have to be back here. You know, we're going to have to go back to the ABCC, get explanation, get whatever information.
I think one has nothing, I think one is separate from the other, right? I think that, I think the transfer of the liquor license, I think when we look at our application and the paperwork that we send in, the transfer of the liquor license, I think that my board might be inclined to approve that. But approving the pledge of inventory, yep.
What's the pledge?
That came from them.
Pledge of inventory.
So in the event that you default, the inventory and the license.
Is it different?
So if it's helpful to the board, so when there's a pledge of license, the license, say they default, and the license goes to the, goes back to the lender, but the lenders, before they can sell it or transfer, would still always have to come back before the Board of Selectmen, before it goes to a new owner. So if there's a concern that it's just the license is going to be out there, be transferred to someone without approval.
I don't think that's a concern.
No. I just think it's an odd thing to ask the selectmen to ratify.
You're right.
Pledge of license and inventory, when they have no knowledge of what the, we don't know what the inventory is. We don't know. I mean, we're saying, yes, you seem like reputable people. You filled out the paperwork. You passed the sniff test, if you will.
Tits.
Yeah. And so, yeah, sure, have the liquor license. I don't know what you have a liquor on inventory at the, at the Independence Harbor, and nor does my board.
The issue is, we're going to have to come back here. It's an ABCC requirement. Look, I don't work for the ABCC, so I understand that you're.
I'm going to say now, and it is on there as a checklist, as far as a pledge of collateral, right?
So what is the selectmen approving exactly? What is the approval that you need?
It's allowing the new entity who's being formed to allow the lender to have a security interest in the inventory and the license. That's what the pledge is. Because the establishment obviously has more value if there's a license tied to it. You know, you're not going to have an event space that doesn't have, for the most part, a liquor license. I don't know the particulars of the background of why the legislature has that as part of requirement for the ABCC, but it is a requirement. You know, I've done this more than a dozen times where this sort of thing is approved. So, and I get your issues with it. I'm just, I don't know how else I can explain it except for the ABCC requires it. And we're not trying to delay this transaction or hold this transaction up on that basis.
And I don't want to hold you up.
Yeah.
I honestly don't. I really don't, because I understand there's a lot riding on it for the present owner and the current owner, and I'm sure you're ready to hit the ground running. I just want to make sure that my board isn't pledging something that.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I'm okay with like, not pledging to what the actual inventory is. I guess we're agreeing that we're okay with.
Exactly.
It, that inventory being pledged.
To the lenders.
To the lenders. Yeah, I have no issues with that.
It's just a promise.
Yeah, I'm looking at it here. I agree.
I don't think that was checked on.
They're not necessarily saying what's in the inventory.
No.
No, maybe because.
I think maybe that's what you need.
Yeah.
Is that clear? Like the, you're not saying what's in the inventory or what's not in the inventory?
Yeah.
The pledge would just be a promise.
To the lender.
To the lender that.
In the event of default.
In the event of default.
It's additional security.
That's all. It's just like the idea of it.
It's like a UCC, something similar, yeah.
Yeah, like it's right here, like, if you see this tab, it's like, voted to authorize, they have a person. It says the following transactions, pledge of license, pledge of inventory, pledge of stock.
Right.
I, it looks like it's a formality. I just don't understand it. And I, I mean, I'm not vehemently against it. It just doesn't really make any sense why the Board of Selectmen would have anything to do with this.
I agree with you, but we've learned a lot of things that makes sense.
You're the state of Massachusetts.
I guess I'm not so concerned to say, let's hold them up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. That's not the.
I mean, is there anything you want us to provide afterwards? I mean, I'm happy to give you whatever you need. Our office can provide that.
I'll do my own research and I'll, I'll listen. If there's an issue, I'll be, I'll be coming. But I don't, I don't know that the, it's just an oddball thing that I haven't seen before.
Right.
And it's just a strange request to ask the Board of Selectmen that run the town.
If this happens again, we're going to have to go in and count bottles.
Yeah, if this is McAllen 25, we'll start there first.
It might be a little late after.
Well, if this is McAllen 25, let me make sure it's a.
I don't think.
It's like a security interest is essentially what it is. You're allowing the bank to have that. There may be situations where a Board of Selectmen may not want that. Right? If it's like a hard money lender or someone they don't trust necessarily, they may not, or an establishment that's had issues in the past. Where you may not want to allow that, but this is a reputable person coming in with a reputable Rockland Trust. It's a reputable. I'm, again, I'm happy to give you whatever you need post this meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wish, I had just realized that, and I would have spent some time researching it to be better prepared to advise the board tonight.
Yeah.
Like I said, and just conceptually, it makes no sense to me why they would be, why they would be approving that.
Okay.
But, like I said, I don't know that it's a big enough of an angst to say, don't, don't do it.
I think it's just the, if I may, I might be off, but it's not necessarily about the inventory. It's more of like our reputation with having the bank, having the liquor license with the venue. Because you can't have a wedding venue without a liquor license, basically. So it's not necessarily about counting bottles. It's more of like the idea of us taking it over and having the liquor license attached to the venue.
So essentially, if they default on the loan, the license also goes to the lender as well, and the lender then would come to you for approval for sale to a new business. Because if they don't have the license and that someone defaults on the loan, they don't have that security interest because the license is half the value of the premises.
That makes sense.
That makes perfect sense.
That makes much better sense.
That makes much more sense, right? That the value of the business isn't truly what you're paying for.
It's physically tied to the license.
Correct.
Yeah, you have to have a liquor license to have a wedding venue.
So that makes sense, that now that the selectmen are aware that you've pledged the license to the.
Exactly.
To the, to the.
I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. That's on me.
And so, yeah, if they, they may assume that license if you default, and then they would be coming back to this board to transfer the license as, rather than you. Rather than, all right, that makes more sense to me.
Yes, thank you.
And that would make sense why the selectmen would need to be aware of that pledge. Get it?
Yeah, there's a lot of forms on this ABCC site, and that's one of them. So.
All right.
Many steps.
Any other questions, so I can close the hearing and then we can vote?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
A motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then let's make sure we get this motion correct. I don't want to have to have that. So this is going to be, so is the first motion just to, to transfer, to approval of the transfer of license between the Independence Harbor and Sapphire Group, period? Or is, and then additional?
I'm sure it's Narrows Road Events LLC.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Or transfer in conformance with the application.
I like it.
Okay, I'm confused again.
Give me a minute. I'm writing it.
Been a long day. Been in the meeting since like 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
I'll write it and then I'll read it. And then you can.
I'll just piggyback on what you say.
There's a reason we're going to turn.
Two lawyers going at it.
It's nice having a TA that's also a lawyer. That does help.
I guess I should ask if they're not changing, if they have any new menus?
What's that?
Anything new for the menus?
Could be.
Just try to let people know, you know, what's.
I wish, there was like a restaurant night there, personally, because I live.
They do have the brunch.
Do they?
They have a brunch.
Yeah, once a month.
How did I not know this?
Yes, once a month. First, the first Sunday of every month.
Like right there.
You either wear a bow tie or a hat.
I could walk home. I literally like walk my dog by that.
Two separate motions, or do you?
Do it in one or two. It doesn't matter. Whatever you prefer.
So motion to transfer liquor license to Narrows Road LLC in compliance with the application?
Uh, Narrows Road Events.
I would actually prefer that you specifically state, as well as the pledge of inventory and pledge of.
And that's what I'm writing, as well as to approve the pledge of license and inventory?
Yes. This is to South Shore Bank. I misspoke before.
To South Shore Bank? You want me to actually make that specific?
But I'm just being clear for the board. It's not Rockland Trust and South Shore.
Thank you.
They don't have to put a bank.
No, you don't have to put a bank.
Motion to transfer the liquor license to Narrows Road LLC in compliance with the application as well as approved pledge of license and inventory.
Yes.
All right, I'll take that motion. So I'll make that motion?
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. All set. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry.
We appreciate it. We look forward to it.
We all learned something tonight.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, so next public hearing. All right, where am I? Where am I? Where am I? All right. Public hearing number three. October 29th, 2024. Town of Freetown, public notice. N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, and manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting features in, under, along, and across the following public way, or ways. Ethan Circle, East Freetown. To install approximately 40 feet of four by four inch PVC conduit across town road. Install one new manhole to be labeled 10078/185. This work is to, is necessary to provide electric services to number three Ethan Circle. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing is provided by law, it will be granted a location for and permission to install, maintain underground cables, conduits, and manholes together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said underground cables, conduits, and manholes to be installed in accordance with the plan files here with, marked Plan Number 1825140, dated October 21st, 2024. A hearing to consider the above will be held on November 18th, 2024 at 7:15 PM at the Police Station Community Room, 15 Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass. Persons interested in commenting may appear at this public hearing. Freetown Board Select Meeting, signed by us. So without, I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oof, that was a mouthful. Are you folks here representing EverSource?
Yes.
N-Star.
I'm Kim Boyd, representing EverSource. And just as you said, we're looking to install approximately 40 feet of conduit across Ethan Circle as well as one new manhole to be labeled 10078 over 185. And that's to provide electric service to number three Ethan Circle.
And this work has not actually been completed yet?
Sorry?
Has the work actually been completed yet?
I don't believe so.
No.
Okay, so we dealt in the past where, before we had the public hearing, the work was already done. So just double check.
We learn our lessons.
And this is literally just for this one property. That's the whole purpose of it. I guess I only asked because I looked at it on a map and it's right next to the train, and I wasn't sure if it had anything to do with, something to do with that, because I, once again, I have no, no idea about electrical conduit, and it says four inch, and I'm like, well, if it's just one, does it need to be four inch? But that's probably the minimum to do it. So, just asking, kind of curiosity.
Good question.
You're going to dig up the road to put this in?
Yes.
When are you going to do this?
I'm sorry, what was that?
When are you going to do this?
So typically, as soon as we get all the permits in place, we do, we do mobilize the work to be done. So as soon as we get approval and the permit is issued, we'll release it to construction and they'll schedule the work.
Well, I'm just worried about winter, right? Winter's coming very quickly. The weather could turn. The ground could freeze. Then, then we're looking at you digging up the road in the middle of the winter, and how do we patch it? The asphalt companies close fairly soon. So that's what I'm concerned with. When are you going to do this? And how are you going to fix the mess that you make up there?
So we have access to hot mix and asphalt all year round. We do this work all year round. This isn't, this isn't new work for us, and we will certainly work with the DPW Director, as we have in the past, to make sure that it is restored to his satisfaction. If you want to condition the approval to that, we're happy to honor that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I hundred percent want Chuck to be involved with it, because especially if you're adding a manhole. You know, we've had a lot of manholes that come off and grade and, you know, whatever, and they're settling and things aren't right. So I want to make sure he's happy with that. And so, yeah, I would hundred percent recommend that we condition it with Chuck's approval.
And just, so the condition will just be, he, after work's complete, he gets his stamp of approval?
Stamp of approval, yeah.
Okay. I was trying to figure, I don't even know where Ethan Circle is, do you?
So it's, I look at it, it's off of Chase Road. Do you know, well, it's Chase and Braley.
Yeah.
There's that, that little development in there. It's in there. Full disclosure, I had to look it up in order to see where it was, so.
I, same here. I was like, where is this place? Sounds so familiar.
Yeah, there are tracks. I didn't even know there was a nearby back there. Okay. Any other things we want to talk about before we close the hearing?
No.
Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion made.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we'll have a vote, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the road opening permit for EverSource at three Ethan Circle, um, with final approval of work being completed by the highway surveyor.
Motion made.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. We have a couple things to sign, I think you guys are all set, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.